Welcome to the Thursday, April 27th, 2023 meeting of San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. My name is Drew Combs, the Chair. I'll call the meeting to order at 4:02 PM. And our first order of business will be the roll call. And so I'll do the, we talked about this before, right? And I can't remember where we landed. But, okay. Director Eisenberg.
Here.
Director Greer.
Here.
Director Stone, sorry. Director Abrika.
Here.
And Director Pine is not here, correct? All right. Next order of agenda is the approval of the agenda. And so I'll ask the clerk to call for public comment on that item. All right, thanks. So I'll bring you back to the dais. Is there any comments on the agenda or motions to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second. And so we'll then go to the roll call vote on approval of the agenda. Director Eisenberg.
Yes.
Director Stone.
Yes.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
And I also approve Director Combs. Okay. With that, we'll go to approval of the meeting minutes from March 23rd, 2023. And I'll ask the clerk to call for public comment on Agenda Item 3.
Would anyone from the public like to make a public comment on Agenda Item Number 3 in minutes for March 23rd, 2022? We have no one present and no one online has made a request.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Harris. So we'll bring it back to the dais and I'll open up for any comments or motions on the meeting minutes from March 23rd.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for March 23rd, 2023.
Very cool. We have a motion to approve from Director Eisenberg, a second from Director Abrika. And so I'll do a roll call vote. Director Eisenberg.
Yes.
Director Stone.
Upstate.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
I'll also vote to approve the minutes and Director Pine is absent. Right. With that, we'll get to Agenda Item 4, Public Comments. Individuals may speak on a non-agendized topic for up to three minutes under public comment and I'll turn it to the clerk to call for public comment.
Would anyone who'd like to make a public comment at this time? I have no requests for making a public comment.
All right. All right. Thank you. With that, we'll go to action items. And 5A is a review and consider updates to the SFC JPA's mission and vision statements, provide direction to staff, and if applicable, adopt Resolution 23-04-27-A. And so we'll first go to public comment on this item. And so I'll ask the clerk to call for public comment and then I'll bring it back to the dais for discussion direction.
Would anyone like to make a public comment on this agenda item at this time? We have no requests for public comment.
All right. Thank you, clerk. Okay, so then I'll bring it back to the dais for any comments or do we have a staff report on this? Yeah.
I'm happy to make a brief verbal report on this.
All right.
So as you read in your board packet, 2014 was the last time that the SFC JPA mission and vision statements were fully vetted and updated. On the heels of the board's recent review and approval of an update to the members' agreement, it's timely to take a look at these vision and mission statements and make sure that they are in keeping with and current with the board's current vision for and the members' agreement current phrase and frame, frames of reference. This was last addressed by the board last year in October. There were a couple of editorial suggestions made and the board requested that this be brought back to the board after the members' agreement had been reviewed and your review and then moved forward for its approval. So this being sort of the next action item in line after that the members' agreement, it is here for your consideration. In your board packet, you'll see the before and after, but it only clearly shows up in red line in the slides. So I apologize for that. I think that was just like a way of I don't know why one showed up with color and one did not. But if you want to see the color version, please refer to the back of your packet where there are the PowerPoint slides for easier visualization. These statements are typically part of our publications. They are typically something that's included on a website, on literature or materials about or by the organization. So it assists us with our communications. There is no schedule. There is nothing pressing. This is a helpful communications item for the organization. With that, I'm happy to take any questions or and or look forward to your input.
Great. Thank you, Director Bruce. And my apologies for going out of order, even though you guys have them very clearly there on the slide for me to follow. Even still, I got it wrong. So but we have done public comment on this item. We have, we just did the staff report. And so is back to the dais for any clarifying questions, any combination of clarifying questions and just discussion observations.
Chair.
Oh, yeah. So I'm sorry.
I just pressed it. There's nothing to see. Thank you. And I just want to say I appreciate these updates and I think they're clarifying and helpful. And you know, I'm going to approve them, but I just, I'm grateful for your time and effort in updating them and I think clarifying. So thank you.
Director Stone.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I feel the same. I appreciate it. When I was reading through the original draft, I thought the only thing missing was work on mitigating and reducing flood risk and really happy to see that that's included in the revised version. So happy to support the staff recommendation here.
Director Abrika.
Yes, I yeah, I understand your report. You included a some language that I don't know. It sounded like recently Valley Water updated there. Or maybe it's always been there. It does more recent.
It is more recent than the last update. And and my knowledge of it is since the October edits that were suggested by the board.
So you know, I I like that they did include the word equitable. And I would suggest that if somewhere in there, we could put it where it might fit, like to protect people and property in an equitable manner. The only, the reason I'm saying that, you know, one, I mean, these days, everything, everywhere, it's diversity, equity, and you know, and a lot of that, in my opinion, is just window dressing. That's just my own opinion. But the fact that the words are used at least commits people to try to look at that. I think in our case, because over the years, I have heard that, I still hear it. And I don't think that we are that kind of board. I think we have always talked about how we want to protect the first, all the communities, the same. We're not going to, you know, create one favor one area, even within a community, like maybe one stretch is going to be done really well and the other is not. I mean, I think I understand sometimes people have that concern and that fear which could happen. But I believe that that we are actually definitely very conscious of that and we want to make sure that whatever the engineers are coming up, whatever, all the experts that are modeling everything. You know, that it's being done in a way that it looks after all the communities, all the stretches on the creek. So anyway, that's when I read that from Valley Water, it reminded me of that. And I think because also Valley Water was severely criticized for the flooding that took place in in the urban areas in San Jose. And you know, I think it, I think sometimes we do need to be reminded. But in this case, it's not talking, you know, I'm not talking racially, ethnically, whatever. I'm really talking that the creek itself, we're looking at it as a, as an engineering project with the value that we have, which is to make it equitable, make it equitable project. So anyway, that that's the only addition I would make and, you know, in some way communicate that.
I agree.
So.
I just want to chime in and I'm grateful to my colleague for pointing this out. I wasn't part of the change in Valley Water's mission statement, but I agree with you. It's important. I actually think that a part of equity is that sometimes we treat vulnerable and under-resourced communities, you know, with more, you know, than we treat more privileged areas. And I think that's important. So I have no problem even with saying racially equitable or, you know, income equitable. So much of that is related in our state and area and country and world. So, you know, I think adding a note of equity is a really nice thing to do. And yeah, sometimes it does end up just being lip service, unfortunately, but I don't think it will with us. And it is nice to have that reminder. So thank you so much. You know, to my colleague for mentioning this important point.
Executive Director Bruce.
Chair Combs, if I may recommend, in the second paragraph of the purpose statement, there are at least a couple of places where the term equitably might be fit and would read well. In the second paragraph, we could say the JPA's objectives are to equitably reduce the risk of flooding. Or we could say the JPA objectives are da-da-da-da-da, to protect people and property equitably, comma.
Nice.
Would either one of those satisfy your interests?
To the second option where it fits, we're protecting people and property.
Equitably.
Or.
Okay. I will take that direction. Thank you.
I'm good with that, too.
Okay, so then when a motion is made, just make sure to incorporate whoever makes the motion to incorporate the edits as suggested by the executive director.
I move that we, that we approve these statements as modified to include equitably. That's my motion.
I'll second. Okay, we have a first from Director Eisenberg and a second from Director Abrika. And so I will now conduct a roll call vote. Director Eisenberg.
Yes.
Director Stone.
Yes.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
And Director Combs, I'm also a yes. And so and Director Pine is absent. Cool. Okay, that was easy enough. Okay, with that, then we'll move on to informational items. And we will, there's two informational items, A and B. And so we'll take a call for public comment on the combined informational items, correct? And so I'll yeah, I'll just do the public comment first, if that's okay.
Where is the update?
So.
Turning on my microphone, the conflict of interest code update. We are obligated to review and periodically update the organization's conflict of interest code. We have reached out to the FPPC for their input through our council at Richard Watson Gershon. The FPPC has taken our draft, made some adjustments and recommendations. The strike-through version that you see in your packet is the edited version with the FPPC's suggestions, recommendations, I should say, as well as, which also has the concurrence of council. This information item is that we will post the proposed changes to our conflict of interest code to our website for public comment for a period of not less than 45 days. Sometime after that time, if we have had any comment, we will consider that we will bring it back to the board for an update after 45 days. So that's going to put us out a couple of board meetings, at least. And once that time is concluded, and if we have had any comments that merit our or require our adjustments to that code, it will become our acting, our effective code of conflict of interest code for the organization. So we, as soon as we are concluded with the board meeting, our proposed changes will be posted to the website.
All right. Thanks for that. And so then I'll bring it to the dais and ask if there are any clarifying questions. Okay, and then I will ask the clerk to call for public comment on this item.
Would any member of the public like to make a public comment at this time?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harris. And so we'll bring it back to the board, back to the dais for any remaining discussion or direction on this item. We obviously, there's no vote on this, right? And so okay, I'm seeing none. I think we can move on to the next item. Thank you, everyone, for all the work on this. And obviously, I'll go on the website. And so anyone who.
It will be, it will be soon on the website. Yeah, by the, by the end of the evening.
Okay.
Then just proceeding to executive director's report, this will be fairly brief. You have this in your board packet. Project updates include signs and benches are on their way for Reach One commemoration and public education. We are grateful for a wet winter for some things in that the vegetation and our native plantings in the Reach One area mitigation sites are doing well, although we will have to do some weeding because the weeds like the wet weather, too. In Reach Two, work is on a brief pause for the top-of-bank supplemental EIR. We are waiting on the hydraulic modeling analyses from Valley Water before proceeding. Channel widening and the CAP 205 with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. As you may know, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will be taking on the regulatory permitting aspects for their channel widening components of the Reach Two project. And we are assisting the Army Corps with documentation and collecting information for those which are moving along quickly. Newell Road Bridge remains on schedule and the large eucalyptus tree at the Newell Road Bridge that Chair Abrika brought to our attention has been trimmed and that large eucalyptus tree is part of a planned removal as part of the Newell Bridge project. In Reach Three, as you all know, Stanford has recently released their notice of intent and notice of preparation for their Searsville Lake Restoration Project. Together with many other members and stakeholders in the community, the JPA submitted comments and a letter on their NOP. And we have been in conversation with Stanford about our comments. Let's see. In this world of the Safer Bay project, we are going to be bringing the updated contract terms and indemnification clauses and Task Order Four at our next, at our May meeting, we had an opportunity to integrate HDR's proposed new indemnification clauses. And rather than bring this to you either rushed or piecemeal, we're going to bring this to you all as a package. The updated master service agreement with the integrated indemnification clauses and also Task Order Four. Very recently, you may have heard, we had a very successful public project update meeting in Palo Alto. I'd like to extend our appreciation to the city of Palo Alto for providing the venue at Duvernix School. It was attended by about 40 residents, mostly of Palo Alto, but not exclusively. And there was very good community engagement. We had a lot of people who had a lot of good questions. And there was a lot of lively engagement. So from an operations and administration standpoint, since the board packet was posted and you have this, I think we're, we have one significant update and that is we have been watching very closely what's been happening with First Republic Bank. Up until about a day ago, Miko and I were both content that because of their outstanding public, excuse me, their outstanding customer service, we would be in a watch and see, but hold the course steady and utilize them as our banking provider. Very concerned about their current profile in the news and the information about their performance. Under Miko's capable stewardship, we are now evaluating one, another bank, and we are looking at three different banks to replace them with all due haste. So that's, that's probably the bulk of the update and I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you and the rest of our, of the staff who is present and the Palo Alto staff who is present on the, for that community meeting. I derive a little late, but I really felt that, you know, even though some folks yelled at me, I think that's really good because I'm honored to receive their feedback. That's why I'm here, you know, and, and yeah, I mean, they have frustration, you know, because they have been flooded and, you know, while, you know, we, well, really, you all on brand new have been doing, you know, a fantastic job. There's not, it's complicated, right? There's a lot of moving parts. And so I think I'm really grateful that you gave the community an opportunity to come in and to express themselves and to vent. I think that's really good for everyone. I do. And there wasn't a lot of defensiveness, which is really great and appreciated, too. I thought it was great and I encourage you actually to do more of these meetings. I think, you know, and so many people came up to me afterwards, some to vent, some to just thank me for being there. I just think it's really a good thing to do. I mean, they, you know, people do want to speak their minds and this is coming, going to them is such a nice way to do it. So I'm so grateful for that meeting. I really am. I thought it was, I do think it was successful. And, and again, I don't mind being yelled at. They're frustrated and I'm an elected official and that's okay. You know, I want to hear their frustration. I do. I want to understand it. And, you know, I, only together can we, you know, move forward. So thank you so much for doing that.
We will certainly be doing more of those in the future. It's great that we can now meet and convene in person. So I'm looking forward to more of those.
No additional clarifying questions on this item. I will say, oh, Director, no, no, you go.
Just following up, I know you were already trying to set up some meetings with the city councils themselves. So I assume that's, I mean, I think that'll be important because it'll give people opportunities. If they can't go to one, they can go to the next city ones because, you know, we're so close, obviously, that, and we meet at different blocks. I think Menlo Park and we meet the same. So, well, so that, anyway, so, but any of them have been set up yet or we'll get the chance to hear.
Yeah, I've reached out to folks, but I have not heard which particular agenda they would like me to speak. So I'm, I will follow up and make sure we set a date.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, thanks. And thank you to the staff for all the work as it relates to the bank. I do, I think it's important to make clear it's because the, you know, one of the concerns is the deposit amount we have in the bank is higher than what is federally insured. And so thereby, I think it almost is obviously a fiduciary duty on our part to make sure that 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 money resides in the most stable financial institution that we can find. So I know that that's a bit of a headache, but appreciate all the effort you guys are putting into that. Okay, with that, we can go to public comment on this or call for public comment on executive director's report.
Would anyone from the public like to make a comment on the executive director's point reported this time? We have Jerry Hearn. Jerry, you can unmute yourself and go ahead and talk.
Thank you, Miko. I want to echo Director Eisenberg's comments about the event at the Duvernix School. Margaret, I think you did a fabulous job of both presentation and handling the questions and you had good support from people like Holly Boyd and Brad Eagleston. I, it was a little, it's always a little challenging to me to hear people yelling and screaming at public officials. And particularly when I know how hard you guys have all worked and I thought you handled, you all handled yourself very, very well and kept the tone down, didn't let it get out of hand. Actually, Brad and I at one point were talking about a meeting that we had earlier, many years ago, that really got out of hand and it was a struggle. So I really appreciate how well that was handled. And I want to just ask a question, Margaret, about something you, one of the items here, depending on potential design changes to the Reach Two and Three projects, you're thinking of identifying repairing and tree restoration opportunities, open space areas. Do you have any idea at this point where some of those open space areas might be upstream of Highway 280? I only ask because I do a lot of work up in that arena and maybe I could help with that.
I'd like Kevin to answer that question.
Great. Thank you.
I think, yes, thanks for the question. Primarily, the plantings would be done up in Rastodaro Preserve or some other area that's already publicly held. Other opportunities might be the mid-pennsylvania regional open space district. So it's, we've identified sites, but they're all publicly held. Foot Hills Park is another one.
That was, that was kind of the ones I was thinking of. So it sounds like you're on top of it already, but let me know if I can help in any way.
Thank you, Jerry. Would anyone else like to make a comment at this time? I have no other requests.
All right. Thank you, Clark Harris. And thank you, Mr. Hearn, for the public comment. With that, we'll bring it back to the dais to see if there's any remaining discussion or questions on the executive director's report. No, no action item needed, obviously, from the board on this agenda item. Okay.
Yep, no, yeah. No, I had a question on. You know, we approved, I think it was last meeting or two meetings ago, the, doing that kind of physical check of the creek. Is there a timeline on that or do you have any idea at this point?
For the channel work itself, we need to wait until there's no water in the channel.
That's the thing. Yeah.
There.
Right. I keep looking at the creek. There's still some little water there.
Yeah, and learning about, so how LIDAR works is if it sees water, it's just like seeing cement.
Yeah.
So waiting until the creek is dry, we get a much better idea of the shape of the creek.
No, I understand. Yeah. And yeah, okay, thank you. That's, I, I'm still concerned about trees, you know, because if you notice across the street, there's this huge tree that fell. There's another one on Newell Road. And I'm just picturing the creek, some trees that may be in pretty bad shape, but I guess we'll just have to wait until that happens to to make an assessment of that. So thank you.
Cool. Thank you for that comment, Director Abrika. If we get more days like this, then the creek will get dry soon enough. Okay, any additional board discussion? Okay, totally cool. With that, we'll go on to Agenda Item Seven, Board Announcements, Information Items and Requests. Do we call for public comment on? Um, do we call for public comment on this, Court Karas? Or do I just open it up for? Okay, thanks. Um, any, any board member announcements, information items or requests? Okay, Director Abrika.
Yeah, very quick and just, uh, it's, it's a related, um, observation. So recently this week, we, uh, city council, uh, and planning commission, we had a joint, uh, update on, uh, the, the work that is being done to look at the, what we call the four corners and Ravenswood, uh, you know, potential development area. So we're not looking at projects yet, but we are, uh, getting any and all information on two potential sizes, uh, of development to, um, I think it's 2.8 or 3.5 million square feet. Uh, and so in the process of making the review and information, and I know that JPA staff has, um, attended meetings of the development group, uh, that, or the potential developers that kind of meet regularly, the property owners. And so they've kind of kept abreast of, of the Safer Bay project issue. But, um, I did, I did observe, I made a comment to our staff, our, our consultants to, um, you know, make sure they include also the, uh, one shoreline in terms of the concept because, you know, as we've talked before, and I think we're going to be following up at some point to determine how the Safer Bay project gets kind of divided up or whatever, right? So, so, so to not create a false impression or, uh, that it's only the JPA working on the Safer Bay, you know, and that it's only affecting EPA, that kind of stuff. So, um, anyway, that's just something to keep track of, but, uh, I just wanted to clarify on case, case you hear otherwise, right? Because sometimes that's how things happen. Somebody reads that and say like, oh, I see the JPA is doing this whole thing. And, um, of course, their concern primarily in the properties that are right here in EPA, but then, you know, it's a bigger project and you can't just talk about one little piece of it. So I, that, that just kind of sharing some information with you and that, uh, you know, as we get later into the year, then it'll get more specific and all of that. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Director Abrika. Um, okay, see no other, uh, board announcements. Okay. Um, then before I move on to adjournment, I do have to express my deep apologies to the public, to the staff and my colleagues for, for the very late start. Um, deeply, deeply apologetic for that. I, I'm still some adjustments, getting back to meeting in person, but certainly promise that, that, that there won't be a delay again in starting the meeting. Um, with that, seeing nothing else additional, I will, uh, adjourn the meeting at 4:35.
Chair, we have a clarifying.
Okay, I won't adjourn the meeting.
Sorry. We actually, we actually need you all to officially vote to approve the resolution for, um, agenda item five A, the mission and vision. Oh, I thought we did. Well, you, you, you approved it, but you didn't specifically approve the. So.
Yeah.
So you approved of the mission and vision statements as amended, but you didn't formally adopt the resolution doing so. So you just need to make that motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
I move to adopt the resolution.
All right. Oh, a second. Um, and so then I'll conduct a roll call vote on the motion to adopt the resolution. Um, Director Eisenberg.
Yeah.
Director Stone.
Yes.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Uh, Director Combs is also a yes and Director Pine is absent. Okay. So with that, I will, uh, right, I can do it. I will officially adjourn the meeting at 4:36.